I'd like to call to order the August 26, 2019 meeting. Please join Councilmember Campbell and the Pledge Allegiance Invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to join together to deliberate and do the much-needed business for our beautiful city. We thank you, Lord, for the many blessings that you continue to shower upon Goodyear and our residents. We're grateful, Lord, for the beautiful city, for the weather, for just having this opportunity to be free, to have our meetings, and to have wonderful, open discussions. We thank you, Lord, for all of the first responders, and we pray your hedge of protection around all of them and their families. Keep them safe as they go about their duties every day to keep our residents safe. We thank you, Lord, for all of our blessings, and we ask this in thy most holy name. Amen. Thank you, Councilman Campbell. All right, team, Councilwoman Laura Tana was not here tonight, so I need a motion to excuse Councilmember. Do I hear a motion?
Submerge.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilwoman Hampton and a second from Councilwoman Campbell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So let's go right to the communication items tonight. The first item is an organizational update on Leadership West. We have a very special guest tonight, Executive Director Michelle Hess, who also is on the council at Buckeye. So welcome, Michelle.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Thank you so much for allowing us to be here tonight and just kind of give a review, a preview, and a thank you. So with that, we will start with a video. It's an organization that inspires, encourages, and educates future leaders and existing leaders here in the West Valley. It runs the gamut from business leaders, nonprofit leaders, civic leaders, all trying to leverage our talents and our abilities to make the West Valley as best as we possibly can. Leadership West as a whole is a, as I like to explain it, is a correlation and advocacy of leaders throughout the West Valley that come together, that want to make a difference.
You get all the leaders together to talk and how to communicate, how to collaborate, how to work together.
The viewpoint of Leadership West, and something that I'm very passionate about, is that the people with the power to control and change our communities are the people who live within them. Too often, I believe that many of our residents believe that somebody in Washington or someone at the state capitol is the one that truly holds the answers to impacting and adjusting our community. And in all reality, it's all of us. It's the residents, it's the citizens within our communities.
So Leadership West really helped me to better understand my community where I wasn't so focused naturally.
The best candidate is someone that is engaged in the valley as a whole.
When one city gets a big development, I'm happy for them because it's good for the West Valley, regardless of whether it came to my city, or to Buckeye, or to Glendale, or the Peoria. We're all in this together, and we are staying united, and it's all because of Leadership West.
It's exciting for those of us who were there in the beginning to see how that has absolutely thrived over the years. I can't begin to tell you all of the big names now who started in Leadership West and are now throughout the entire West Valley.
It's an organization that inspires- Watch again. All right. So by providing both an education and relationship-building opportunity, Leadership West brings the best and the brightest together to solve community problems, and we desire to impact the West Valley in a positive way. Over the next 20, according to some articles, as you, I don't have to tell you guys, you already know, over the next 25 years, 43% of the growth in Maricopa County will occur in the West Valley, and we're already seeing that. And that is why it's so important that Leadership West is cultivating the Leadership West capital here in order to establish and capitalize on healthy growth. So what we focus on is a civic ownership mindset here at Leadership West. We also talk about fourth quadrant leadership. We use true colors for our communication piece. We use five practices of exemplary leadership for our personal development. And we're now exploring youth development, and then we're engaging in civil dialogue, which we all believe are key factors into leadership development. Our core program is the flagship program, which is 150-plus hours of intensive leadership experience that will provide you with greater regional awareness of the West Valley, leader-to-leader relationships, leadership skills development, and behind-the-scenes asset tours. In year one, as many of you know, we will have a retreat. We have our five practices. We meet every month from October to May with a graduation in June and lots of leadership development, and then focus tours throughout the year. Over the second year, we ask that all of our members give 12 hours of some kind of civic engagement back to the community. That can be a project that could be running for council, any way that they're going to give back and use their new increased regional awareness and new leadership skills in the community. This program is a professional leadership development experience for those within your organization with great leadership potential and an increasing level of responsibility. That's the LWI piece. That is the beginning of the flagship every day. In the years past, we never had a leadership development, which was really funny for those of us who have gone through before. We said, but where's the leadership piece? So in Class 21, they introduced the leadership development piece, and that's the LWI, which we're really proud and excited about. We get extensive leadership discussions. Some of those that we had this year were the personality lingo, emotional intelligence, stages of a team, hiring the best, applied colors, lateral thinking, and strategic planning, just to name a few. A year in review, and this is where Goodyear has always been a partner with Leadership West. Actually, Stephen Cleveland, city manager for many, many years, was one of the founding members, and so we're just proud to continue this partnership for over 25 years with the city of Goodyear. But we're really proud of what we've done over the last year. We've had 27 graduates from the flagship program that are now engaged in your communities locally here, making a difference in the West Valley. We had seven alumni that ran for state and local elections, one alumni that was appointed to a local school board, three of our alumni are leading local chambers here in the West Valley, 15 are serving on new local and national boards, one Athena Award finalist, one Phoenix Business Journal's Most Admire Leader of the Year, four that were selected for the Luke Air Force Honorary Commander Program, three that were actually able to complete it. And then we have a national or annual regional project called Speak Up, Stand Up, Save a Life that reaches over 3,000 students three years in a row. That's a regional project that we do collectively, and just countless of hours that are going into our West Valley neighborhoods. You know, we talk about who our cohort is, and I love this quote, that you are the average of the five people that you spend the most time with. When I look at my experience, I am also an alumna of Class 20. I really am still hanging out with five people that I connected well with, Councilmember Campbell being one of them, and they really have changed the trajectory of my leadership here in the West Valley. So we just would like to say thank you to the city of Goodyear. Thank you for the council members that have participated. Thank you for your leadership. And we have a very exciting year that is coming up as well, just some previews of that. We have 33 new leaders that are coming from across diverse backgrounds, three of them council members, three of them nonprofit leaders. You've got small business owners, other government employees, utility employees, educators, and a congressional staffer that will be joining us for our upcoming year. We have 10 leaders that will be joining us in the Leadership West Institute, the Leadership Development Piece only. We have also that we're branching out on a new regional youth retreat that we've never done before in the West Valley. We are joining with six West Valley youth councils and commissions, and we're bringing them together to work on some leadership pieces, some communication, and some networking, as well as how they can take a regional issue, take them back to their own cities, and support one another on a regional basis. So we're really excited about that new pilot program that we've got. We're working with John, and he's just a wonderful partner to have. So once again, we just want to thank the city of Goodyear for just being such an amazing partner over the 26 years. It has been a pleasure getting to know each one of you, and we're just so grateful to partner with you. So thank you. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Well, before we give you a round of applause, because we know what a great organization this, I know the council has some thing to say, so I'm going to start with Wally, since you are, the two of you get together often. So Wally?
Yes, Michelle and I do. We bonded during the class, and we have stayed bonded all along. And I remember when Michelle was appointed to Buckeye. I sent her a little note and congratulated her and said, let's get together for coffee. And we met up in Verrato, and it was just wonderful. But Leadership West really has made a difference in my life. I thought I knew so much about the West Valley, but Leadership West really showed areas that I had no idea were there for the West Valley and the jewels that they really are. So the job you're doing, Michelle, is wonderful. We do encourage anyone that's interested in joining us at Leadership West. It is worth the time and the effort.
Brandon? Little mini duo here.
Yeah, I also think it's a great organization, and that's why I'm looking forward to be the new class this year, 26. So I'm looking forward to the program and looking forward to collaborating with leaders throughout the West Valley and just helping out the West Valley as a whole. So, thank you.
Laura?
Well, I'm proud to be a member of Class 24, and the friendships that I made have been long-lasting. I really valued the opportunity to meet people across all sectors of the business realm and how we collaborate together to advance and grow the West Valley. So I want to thank you for your leadership. I'm proud to continue to be on your team, helping out, and it's really exciting to see that we have so many of our people from our Faith and Community Roundtable who are going to go this year in Class 26 as well with Brandon. So it's going to be a great class. Look forward to the contributions.
Michelle?
You know, Michelle, I just want to thank you for all your public service. Besides being on the Buckeye Council, also we served together on the Southwest Lending Closet, and I don't know where you fall in time, because now, you know, you're working with this Leadership West. So I appreciate everything that you do. I really do.
Yell?
I guess almost last, but not least.
Not quite.
Michelle, I've had the privilege of working with a number of the Leadership West graduates here in the city throughout my time, both as an employee now and obviously as a council. But the transformation that takes place in them from their understanding and their perspective is always amazing to me. Leadership West does a great public service for the employees of the communities as well as the potential future leaders. So thank you, and please take that, my thanks back to the rest of the organization. Their work is well-renowned in the West Valley.
Well, Michelle, I thank you very much. And you have to think, it's just not the students in the class, it's when they graduate and they're out in our community, and the West Valley is on fire, every city. And you're part of that tribulation to it all, because you are there and you are helping them and giving them the bravado they need in order to go out and, again, push the West Valley. So let's give a round of applause for it. All right, the next item on it is very exciting. We've got a terrific group of people behind it all. So it's regarding the new city signature special event. Festival and event coordinator Brenna Hosey is presenting tonight.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. Just wanted to give everyone an update on the fiscal year 21 goal that we have, and we're just going to dive right in. We've just got some highlights of the events that we've had so far this year. This is from the Fourth of July, Heart and Soul and Hop and Hops. So the first goal that we're going to talk about tonight is the goal of increasing city signature attendance by 30% by fiscal year 21. And by the end of fiscal year 19, we were already showing an increase of 10%. And we also, because of the new city signature event of Hop and Hops, as well as the amazing attendance at the Goodyear Lakeside Music Fest, we were able to increase those numbers. Projections for the end of the fiscal year 20, which would just be two years into the goal, would be an increase of 29%. So we're looking pretty good at meeting that goal. So pretty excited about that. And you'll see in the graph, it shows most of our growth is going to come from fiscal year 21, because by that time, we'll have all of the new signature events rolled out and then increasing as we go. The second goal was to create two new signature events. The photo that you see on the right is actually from the first signature event, Hop and Hops, which we in Recreation are very proud of. We had an attendance of 5,700 plus, which is astounding for a first-year event. So we're very excited about that. So I bet you're wondering, what's the new signature event going to be? So we wanted to do something that stands out in a calendar of so many events. Once it gets nice outside, what do you do that stands out? And we came up with a lot of ideas, and I got very excited about the idea of being a kid again. So I'm going to present to you tonight Camp Go Back, which is a day-to-night camp retreat for all ages. So whether you've been to summer camp or not, or whether you just want to relive your nostalgic bonfire-loving days, this is what this event is about. So just to give you a quick overview, we're going to do it on November 2. It's going to feel amazing outside. We've already double-checked. We're going to do a day-to-night event. So we want to do some daytime activities and then go into nighttime, and we're going to do it at the Estraya Mountain Amphitheater, which is where Goodyear Lakeside Music Fest was. And then starting at 4:00 PM and ending at 8:00 PM. So I'll walk you through some of the ideas that we're thinking about doing. We are still producing this event as we speak, so this is just pictures to get the ideas blowing. So we want to do some fun things in the daytime, so an archery station, or a rock-climbing wall, or maybe a ropes course. Definitely want to put a slip-and-slide in there somewhere. Want to put a photographer at the end so they can capture the funny faces people are making. We also want to do some things that make you remember going to camp, like making DIY smores booth, or doing your own tie-dye shirt, or I was a big fan of friendship bracelets, so I really want to see that come to life at the event. And then we want to take it into nighttime, and something I'm pretty proud of is that with Geileen and Arts and Culture, we're working on making a 20-foot-tall fake bonfire so that it's safe for everyone to be around, and we're thinking about making it with lights, wind, and silks to really bring that to life and make people want to pull in and say, what is that giant bonfire doing there? But we're also going to have just a hammock area or blanket area if all you want to do is enjoy the shows that are going on, or the live music, or maybe when you went to summer camp, the weekend ended with a talent show. So I'm going to put a talent show at the very end, too, much like how the fireworks bring everyone together at the end of Star Spangled Fourth. I want this talent show to really blow everyone out of their seats and have it be the grand finale to this event. And this is an ad that we're working on. It's going to go on the back of N-Focus, and it's got a very retro theme to it, and we're tagging it with Bring Your Inner Child. So whether you have a child or whether you want to be a kid again, this is the event for you. And that is Camp Go Back.
Well, Brenna, that sounds good. Anybody on the council going to volunteer to talent?
I'm currently seeking for talent.
Trying to get you some help before you leave the door.
Thank you.
Well, they're smiling, so I think everybody's happy. We're looking forward to it, and I commit my counsel. If there's something that you want them to do, they're going to step up to the plate and do it, right?
Oh, yeah, we'll do it.
All right. Well, you know, Mayor got us a lot of likes on Facebook, so that's a challenge.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
All right, so now we're at the regular meeting. So I'm going to call, dismiss the, start the regular meeting. Now is the time for citizens who would like to address the city council on any non-agenda item within the jurisdiction of the Goodyear City Council. And I do have the names. Do I have all the speaker card names here, or do I have more?
There's one additional.
All right, would you like to bring it to me, please?
Did you want me to just call them?
Yeah, but I still want it.
Okay.
Just give me the names so I have it. You just bring the list up here. I'm making it complicated for you. I want to make sure that we've got them in the right order. All right, that's the last one. Okay, before you come up, I just review this, and many of you know this. The council will listen to comments and may take any one of the following, and this is by state statute. We can respond to criticism. Number two, we can request that staff investigate and report on the matter. Number three, we can request the matter be scheduled on a future agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. The yellow light will let you know we have 20 seconds left to speak. And before you begin to speak, just identify yourself. We greatly appreciate this. We will call your names out, though. So city clerk, go ahead.
Nancy Brown?
Hi, I'm Nancy Brown. I live in Pebble Creek. My home of 21 years backs up to the golf course at Bullard Wash, which is traversed right now by standing and running water. Because the ground is very saturated, the maintenance folks can't cut the grass, and the heavy flow stops and traps the water, which is becoming, well, it isn't becoming, it's now stagnant. It's a perfect place for algae-covered place, for breeding mosquitoes. Maricopa County Department of Health confirms that as of June, there have been 27 cases of West Nile virus so far in 2019, just in the county. There are two confirmed cases in Pebble Creek. Last time, this time last year, there was only one case in the whole county. Dr. Rebecca Shunenschein, who is Medical Director for Disease Control, warns we will see more cases this year than in the last five years. And quite frankly, I'm pretty uncomfortable that my backyard is a probable source for the problem. As I've been keeping records since July 4th, there were times before that that we had water over the road, but we've had water over the road for, since July 4th till today. I rode with a neighbor, and we sloshed through the water on our way here tonight. Three of those days, the water was deep enough and dangerous enough, because it's very slippery, that our ropes encircle was closed completely. You couldn't get through there at all. Dr. Shunenschein also warns that the algae that is forming can be very dangerous. She warns not to touch it and not to walk through it. We've had several people fall, and yesterday I saw one of the pets drinking back there. I don't think it's a good idea. My own personal biggest problem is the bugs. This morning, after I brushed my teeth and reached for my drinking glass, it had three mosquitoes in it. Yeah, it's not so cool. We residents of Pebble Creek are really aware that there is a dollar cost. I personally can't garden, I can't use my patio, and we're terribly aware of the cost in reduced property values, in hardship for residents, in health threats, not only to us as residents, but to the surrounding area. Serious discussion of our problem began in 2016, and we want a sound, workable, mainly timely solution. We've been waiting way too long. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Janet Kirschbaum?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I'm Janet Kirschbaum, and I reside in the Pebble Creek community, also at 3263 North 151st Drive. I am here tonight to ask the council to expedite the approval of a construction permit that the Pebble Creek HOA submitted. I understand it may take up to 90 days for approval. The construction is to update the flood control area in Pebble Creek. The excess water for the past three years has been due to all the additions of warehouses, Loop 303, new homes, as well as Luke Air Force Base clearing land. The tailwater from the farmers is not being absorbed like it was in the past. As you are aware, in the past 30-plus days, we have experienced a continuous water flow causing a swamp marsh on the Pebble Creek Eagles Nest side. I've contacted the city on numerous occasions to discuss the problem and given the same answer, not our problem, contact your HOA General Manager, Bill Barnard. And I have a copy right there of an inquiry from Donna Perkins here, which reflects the same in writing. While that information given may have been true in the past, however, I have recently learned that this swamp marsh we have is due to a broken pipe north of Indian School that feeds into our pipe in the Pebble, in the Bullard Wash. This pipe has been broken for over 30 days, and the city's dragging its feet getting it fixed so that the water can flow through the pipe as it's supposed to. This is a city problem to fix and to fix it now. Let me tell you what we've endured and are keep on enduring. One, at least three people have been diagnosed with West Nile virus. One of them found out he had it after he donated blood. Who knows how many people are walking around Pebble Creek community with this undiagnosed, possibly fatal West Nile virus already in their system from this gross mosquito infestation. According to the CDC, with regard to the West Nile virus, severe illness can occur in people of any age. However, people over 60 years of age are at greater risk, and one out of 10 people who develop severe illness affecting the central nervous system die. This statistically, this statistic is incredibly alarming to an active adult community like Pebble Creek. A second person diagnosed, lost her ability to walk, think clearly as her brain was swollen, and had temporary eyesight loss. One more person we know of was in ICU for six days suffering from West Nile virus. Number two, bicycle and walking accidents have occurred on the roadway, and golf carts have not been able to drive on our roadway as they cannot drive on the city streets unless licensed to do so. Many of our residents are stuck in their homes who do not have two cars. There have, number three, there have been complaints of residents who are unable to actually entertain guests from outside our main gate due to the fact that the guests would have to go through ropes in north or ropes in south to get their home, as only residents are able to come through in the other gates. When the streets are flooded and there is no trespassing, what are they to do? Because of the standing water from the broken pipe, Pebble Creek has had to spray for the mosquito infestation with possible carcinogenic materials to rid the area of mosquitoes instead of treating the source of the problem. We are now exposed to cancer-causing chemicals. Number five, we and many of our neighbors cannot go in or out of our front or back doors since this swamp marsh has existed. We have to let people in and out through the garage. We have to have bug lights inside our house and spray ourselves due to the infestation. We know what Robeson has to do to fix our water problem prior to the city's broken water pipe. We implore you to come to the aid of many of your constituents and fix the broken pipe immediately, as well as expedite the approval of our construction permit. Each and every council member sitting here was very vocal and friendly when running for office, but it seems to be hiding, but seemed to be hiding and not helping, in fact, actually hurting our community when we really need you all to step up and be there for us.
Thank you very much.
I defer my time to Janet.
I'm just going to finish one.
Well, I've actually given her more time. The lights and flashes-
I have one paragraph left.
Right, then continue.
Thank you. A number of residents wanted to be here tonight but were unable to, due to health issues resulting from the floodwaters. And that's it. So, and I had the pictures.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jeff Gillan?
Hello. Jeff Gillan, I actually live on the Tuscany side, but I do go through there with my bike, and my wife and I ride around a lot through there. I'm a bike rider, and sure enough, I went through and I was one of the people that fell. My wife got through, and actually, when she was coming back toward me, walking her bike, she fell. walking her bike, she fell. We both cracked our bike helmets and had some injuries. Probably not as bad as there could have been. So I immediately tried to warn people through our e-group and actually got them to put some signs up, warning people about how danger, dangerous, all of a sudden, there was a big change from just water on the road to now there's hidden algae that, you know, nobody expected. And it just caught people by surprise. Very dangerous, it was very slippery. And I do a lot of hiking, too, and it's, it was worse than walking through a river that has a lot of algae in it. And all I'm asking is, is that the, you know, the, people look at all of the issues that are causing this. You know, going back to the root cause of, you know, is it the projects that are causing this? Is it the, the broken pipe? I don't know. I used to be a planner for the power grid in Wisconsin Upper Peninsula, Michigan. I know what, how important it is to coordinate with your neighbors, you know, the other cities that are approving projects, the, you know, the state when they put in a highway. But we have to look at the impacts, and we just really need to understand what's causing this. And then coming up with a process to fix things when there's an emergency, like a pipe break or whatever it is, and look at the impacts to the people that live here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bernard Rubin.
Thank you, board. My name's Bernard Rubin. I live at 14882 West Verdy Lane in Pebble Creek. Up until two days ago, I was minus eight staples in my head, which I now have courtesy of the water running across West Verdy Lane. On Saturday, just after completing a walk around the circle, using parts of the golf course, I eventually got back to West Verdy Lane, and looking at the water there, it seemed to be readily passable. It was far lower than normal. I took one step, I wound up, flipped over, banged my head right into the ground. A good neighbor stopped his car, tried to help me. He wound up tripping and falling into the water. I'll get into this condition, and I really want to sort of focus on one thing. To me, as someone in private business, it is incredible that a community, as nice as Pebble Creek is, and I enjoy living there, has been able to talk their way or totally ignore three streams of water that intersect three major roads, West Verdy Lane and Twice on Ropes Circle. We have tons of construction equipment over on the other side. We have massive amounts of construction material. We have God knows how many skilled laborers. In the business I was in, which was the hotel industry, if we face an emergency like that, that impacted incoming guests, my company would said, we don't care what has to be done, who has to be spoken to, get on the phone, get people in here, provide some sort of overpass so people can walk or drive over it and won't worry about the long-term political fixtures or what has to be done. It is remarkable that this has gone on so long. I've lived here now four years. I love living in Pebble Creek, Pebble Creek, but I cannot understand how this could be let go. Who's responsible? I'm not an attorney, but I will speak to one. But the city must have some influence. Robeson has to deal with the city for permits and other things. I'm sure some political pressure could be put on him. I think it's a disgrace, really, in light of all the building that's going on here, that all the brains, we can't figure out how to provide homeowners a way of going over simple streams of water with either their feet or their cars. You can Google it, and you can find people that rent this stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Bill Holt.
Good evening, council. I'm Bill Hulte. Obviously, live in Pebble Creek, like everyone else, right? So I went looking for a source of where the water is coming from. I don't know if you can see this. That probably doesn't work. I don't know how to make it work. But anyhow, I got a photo of basically.
If you want somebody to help you.
Yeah, just put it under now.
Face up?
Do it, Bill. Yeah.
Okay. There you go. All right, so that's our source of our water. It's at the corner of Alsop and Bethany Home Road. It's a Central Arizona Projects place they dump water so they can feed the farm fields. So, and but, as you can see, they're dumping tons of water, and there aren't any farmers to use the water. So it's got to come, you know, here's, here's growing across the street at Alsop. And there's a little channel that they built for it, which is a great idea, which is probably what we all have do, done in Pebble Creek. And here it is, again, coming across, what is this, Camelback, facing north. So, as you can see, there's some, can't see well, but there's some earth-moving equipment there, and there's a retention pond right there that it could have been run into, but it doesn't. It runs into the channel, and then goes under Camelback into the park that's right there going on Camelback. And this is where it is going down the street. I think the pipe that everyone keeps talking about is just off to the, to the side of it over here that's broken, and so it runs down the channel here on the, what, or the east side of the park. And then it comes over to this nice little waterfall that Camelback also has. And as you can see, it's still lots of water there that's still got to go somewhere. And unfortunately, there's no place for it to go except Pebble Creek. Unfortunately, there's, there's no gate, no nothing. There's only one farm field out there that's using water, and it's got a rose field. So, you know, it's, so, my personal thought is that civil air, or canal has to be contacted and have them reduce their allocations for the farmers, because they aren't using it, so it gets forced onto us. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any others?
No, ma'am.
All right. I want to thank everybody that came before and gave us information tonight. So we're going on to the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please read consent agenda items three through five by title only?
It's actually three through six. Sorry, ma'am, that's an error on your script. It's number three, approval of minutes.
I can't hear you. Can you bring your microphone or closer? Thank you.
Number three, approval of minutes. Number four, approve the budget transfers for fiscal year 2019 and fiscal year 2020. Number five, approve this calendar year 2020 water order and capital expenditures for the Central Arizona Project cap. And six, approve the final plot of First Park PV 303 Phase 2.
Thank you. Does anyone on the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? All right. Does any, then I, do I need a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda items? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Kano and a second from Councilman Pizzillo. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Let's go to the business, and I'd like to remind council to wait till a motion and a second before discussion. We'll start with the number seven on business. It's to consider approving the expenditure authority for fees and costs for the recreation campus and the off-site improvements and associated budget transfers. Nathan Torres, Parks and Recreation Director, and Tony Humphries, Senior Project Manager, presenting. Gentlemen.
Thank you, mayor and council. Tonight, we are requesting your consideration in authorizing expenditures to allow for the recreation campus project to move from the design phase to the construction phase and ultimately opening by summer of 2021. Joining me this evening is Tony Humphries. He's our senior project manager that's assigned to this project. As detailed in last week's work session, this journey has been in the making for the past several years. In 2014, council adopted the Parks Recreation Trails and Open Space Master Plan. This plan specifically identified the need for a community park, a recreation center, as well as an aquatics facility. In addition, according to the last several citizen satisfaction surveys, residents indicated that maintaining and improving parks and providing more recreational opportunities is a top funding priority. It is this community foundation, along with council's strategic goals, that are at the very basis for this effort. The past two years, we have conducted extensive community outreach in the master planning and design of the recreation campus. In all, we've touched over 1,100 residents, community stakeholder groups, as well as several of the city commissions, including the Parks and Recreation Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission, of course, the Arts and Culture Commission, as well as the Youth Commission. And so the recreation campus consists of a 30-acre community park, a 48,000-square-foot recreation center that's here, as well as an aquatics facility. Key features of the park include distributed parking along the perimeter. What this allows us to do is ensure that once users visit the site, they don't have to cross-connect with vehicular traffic, so users can engage the site in a very safe manner. But what it also allowed us to do was create a walking path all along the perimeter of the site, and that's outlined here in the hash-marked red color. One time around, the entire perimeter is a mile long. So we're pretty pleased with that offering. In addition to the walking path and trail, we, the site features a, a great lawn area for gathering space that features, features an area for public art that is, an art piece that can be very engaged by the public, as well as an art plaza. Other key signatures include multipurpose fields, of course, sport courts for basketball, sand volleyball. Don't forget the pickleballers, as well as tennis. There also is large group amadas for public gatherings, and then a very dynamic playground that features different slopes for kids to engage and climb and slide down as well. So we're pretty pleased with, with the park offerings itself. In terms of the 48,000-square-foot recreation center, that will feature a dedicated space for teens. It features multiple, multipurpose rooms for activities that you see depicted here, whether it's tot time, senior card games, or bongo, or larger corporate or HOA-type events, or weddings. It also features in the lower left, a multipurpose gymnasium. And when I say multipurpose, it truly is just that. It will accommodate all types of activity, from recreational volleyball, basketball, dodgeball, summer recreation. But the flooring will also allow us to host larger-type corporate events as well and bring tables and chairs onto that surface as well. So it truly is multipurpose. And did I mention pickleballs inside? Pickleballs? Yep. Can't forget the pickleballers, of course.
Can't forget that.
The, the recreation center also features an indoor walking track that's depicted here to the right. And 10 times around that, that track is, is a mile. It also features fitness rooms for yoga and spinning classes. There is also a, a fitness area for cardio training. So there'll be some cardio machines, there'll be some circuit training, machine offerings in that space as well. That's the recreation center. The site also has an aquatics facility, and the aquatics facility features a 25-yard competition lap pool that will accommodate recreational, as well as up-to-high-school-level competitions, as well as swim lessons and different types of, of offerings there. One of the key signatures for the aquatics facility is the upper right. It's the Family Fun Play Pool. That features a zero-depth entry, a play feature that will have plenty of splash play elements to it. How about a lazy river, where you can actually jump on a, on an inner tube and float down the lazy river? And if that isn't enough for your desire, you can also go down the, one of two of the 27-foot-tall slides on the site. So we're pretty excited about the aquatics facility as well. And so that's an overview of the site. Again, I gave a, a full update at last week's work session, but, you know, the facility is truly like no other. And it's like, it's not like no other, because it has over, it's over amenitized, because it certainly is not. But it is like no other, because there's something for everyone at this site, all ages, all abilities, and multiple interest groups. And mayor and council, it's like no other, because this will truly be the gathering place for our community. And with that, I'm going to turn things over to Tony to talk about the expenditure request this evening.
Welcome, Tony.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. Again, my name is Tony Humphrey. You may not recognize me last week. I think I was wearing a Hawaiian shirt, so.
Yeah.
Very honored to be here tonight. Again, my name is Tony Humphrey. I'm the Senior Project Manager here at the City of Goodyear. I've been here since May of 2019. Prior to that, I was with the City of Phoenix for approximately 18 years. And before that, I was with the City of Tucson, all working on capital improvement projects. I'm very excited to be here today to talk to you about this project. Little bit of back, little bit more background regarding the recreation campus. It is comprised of six projects. Nathan mentioned the three specific as related to the parks. That is the park itself, the recreation center, and the aquatic center. There's also three additional projects that are off-site improvements, which is improvements along Australia Parkway, Harrison Road, and the Roosevelt Irrigation District relocation. That project's very critical to the success of this project, because that has to be relocated for the rest of the improvements to take place. These six projects are listed in the Capital Improvement Plan of FY '20. It was approved by this body in late June of 2019. The original budget assigned for this project was $67,201,900. Based on previous commitments and expenditures that we've used to date for pre-designed services and pre-construction services, totaling $2.8 million, we have a remaining balance of $64,397,900. These remaining funds are to pay for the remaining expenditures related to constructing this project, which include the remaining design, construction, construction administration, the public art, any fees associated with completing this project. So with that said, staff's recommendation is to approve the expenditure for authority up to $64,397,900 for all remaining fees associated with this project. With approval of this expenditure, the next steps would be the implementation of the construction notice to proceed, followed by a groundbreaking ceremony, which was previously discussed. One of the reasons why we're coming to council in this format is for two specific reasons. Is because, as mentioned before, there's six projects with specific contractors' design, would have to come back to mayor and council multiple times and to be respectful of mayor and council's time. And in addition to that, it would also allow city staff to react promptly to issuing contracts and securing long lead items in a timely manner. With that, I conclude my presentation and be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. In a moment, they may ask, Nathan, did you have one other thing? Did you have to present?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Just wanted to, this slide is not completely updated, but what is listed correctly in the action item, the amount of $64,729,700 is the correct authority amount that we are requesting this evening.
Okay, thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, ma'am.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, can I have a motion in a second to approve the expenditure authority up to $64,729,700 for fees and costs for completion of the recreation campus related to off-site improvements and budget transfer? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Stip, and second, I always, I can't reverse this now.
I know.
And Councilman Pizzillo. Open for council discussion. Councilman Pizzillo.
Listen, I appreciate the thorough discussion we had last meeting dealing with this work session. This is one of those projects I know we've been looking for, for a long time. It kind of covers everybody, whether fitness, the kids, you know, people my age, people younger than my age. It's got a little bit for everybody, and I'm really looking forward for this coming to fruition. So again, I appreciate the details that we had. So, again, I appreciate the details that we had before, for any of those, you know, that are seeing this out in the public for the first time, if it's thoroughly been at the last one, and it's something that's been in the works for a long, long time. And I guess I appreciate all the hard work that you've done to bring this to this point. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Stip.
You know, I think it's really important to point out for the community's benefit, we are talking about building a roughly sixty-five-million-dollar recreation campus, another eighty-three-million-dollar civic square project, all without an increase in tax rate, and I think that's really, that's really important. We, I said over the weekend, we should have done this forty thousand people ago, or fifty thousand people ago, so patience is paying off for us in the long run. Nathan, I know the work that you and your staff have put together to bring the community in, to make this what we have asked, which is a true community recreation campus, you know, has just been commendable. So, for everybody at Parks and Rec, you should be very proud of what we're bringing forward. As a representative of the community, I'm real excited to be able to stand tall and say, we're finally bringing it back the way we are, so thank you very much.
Councilmember Cantwell.
I think this is one of the most creative uses of space that I've seen. I think we're really going to make a very signature location for Goodyear, where the gathering place is amazing, and with the civic square, we'll have another gathering place, and so, just very excited that we're at this phase today to move this forward. Thank you for all the hard work you've done on this.
Councilmember Campbell.
Tony, will this be turnkey-ready with the amount that we are approving tonight? Does that mean all the furniture, we're ready to open the door once everything is done?
Madam Mayor, member of council, yes, ma'am, that is correct. If I fail to mention, I apologize, that does include what we refer to as FFNE, which are the furniture fixtures. For lack of a better term, this is the whole enchilada.
Very good.
So, we're anxious to get this going.
That's wonderful. Well, we have told Nathan and everyone, we just wanted it done right, because from the very beginning, I've been afraid that we didn't build it big enough, and then we added the indoor walking space, which was really critical to a large group of residents. It's too hot to walk outside in the summer, and we don't have a mall, so we can't go there to walk, and it's going to be wonderful to be able to utilize that building year-round, and especially the indoor walkers, so we thank you for that, and we thank you for all the work. This is really a dream come true for our residents, because we have no recreation center for this city, and we have an opportunity to offer a place for our youngsters to go, our teenagers to hang out, and for us to succeed, so thank you all so very much.
Councilmember Bazillo. Okay, Councilman Hampton.
Yeah, I would agree. This is a great project that we'll definitely, a lot of our residents have been waiting for and looking for. I think this was the top thing that residents wanted when we did our survey, and it's been a little while coming, but we're doing it right, and doing it right the first time, so looking forward to it. I know my kids are very excited to go play there, so looking forward to this becoming a reality, so thank you again to the team. I know it's been a long process, a lot of public input along the way, so thank you for that. Oh, and also, congratulations on winning the award last week in Tucson as well, that was great as well, so I think we're, your department is doing a great job, so thank you.
Nathan, I have to thank you and the entire team, and just the award that you received this last week is just evidence of how good your team is, and, you know, it's so nice because that area, so many people during the city center committee came from the neighborhoods and said what they wanted, and then we had to disappoint them, we had to take it away, but we really didn't take away, we delayed it, and I will say, this is probably a lot better than the one we had planned for the community. So, I'm excited for the city, I'm excited for that neighborhood, and congratulations once more to the staff, you've done an outstanding job. Mr. Humphrey, thank you, we look forward to seeing all the future and how it's going to look, we appreciate you coming tonight. Anything else? All right, then I think what we're ready is to vote on this, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Congratulations, this is for the staff. We're at number eight on the, number eight item on business to consider approving the Goodyear Water Treatment Facility and Raw Water Delivery Pipeline project expenditure. Javier Saravich, Public Works Director, is some meat coming tonight, Mohan?
Mayor, I'll be doing the presentation.
Stop, I saw him back there. Deputy Director of Engineering will present.
Mayor and council, good evening. We are here this evening to request your support to move to the next phase of the Goodyear Water Treatment Facility. This project includes the construction of a raw water pump station, a six-mile raw water line from the SRP connection, and the water treatment facility that will be located west of our existing Goodyear Water Reclamation Facility of Australia and MC-85, and also a two-mile water line connecting the plant to our system. Taking a brief look at how we got here, the 2016 Integrated Water Master Plan helped us to find the best way of bringing our Colorado River allocation to Goodyear. In 2017, we established an unprecedented partnership with Salt River Project for the delivery of our water to their canal system. In 2017, we also started our selection process for the partner that would design, build, and for a period of time, operate our facility. In 2018, Newland partnered with the city on this project. Later in the year, CH Two-M Hill was selected as our design builder and operator, and work started on the concept for the plant. I want to note that during the process, CH Two-M Hill merged with Jacobs Engineering, and you will hear and see those two names in different documents, they're one and the same. We want to emphasize the significance of our partnerships. Working with SRP put the project on a path for success, as SRP is a water leader in the state. The terms of the partnership were so pioneering that ultimately were recognized in 2017 by Westmark Best of the West with an award for excellence in innovation. That was a great night. Our partnership with Newland was critical in making the project a reality as well. This partnership not only benefits the city as a whole, but also establishes certainty of water supply for Newland for many years ahead. Other partnerships are also essential in the planning and design phases. Internally, we knew early that this project's size, complexity, and required timeline was going to challenge us, so internal teams met early to understand and solve issues. We brainstormed, we collaborated, we had healthy conflicts, we fought a little, but finally, we came together and brought value to the city. Externally, all agencies rallied around this project to help us as well, they were truly part of the team. Looking ahead, pending your approval, we have four important milestones. In September of this year, initial site improvements will take place to allow for general access to the site. Later in November, an onsite groundbreaking ceremony is being planned. In October of 2021, we push the on button, starting operations of the plant and checking all systems. And finally, in December of 2021, production of water and integration of surface and groundwater in our system will start, and this is a pretty delicate operation. To date, encumbrances and expenditures add to over eighteen million dollars. This includes design, owner representation, and the acquisition of the land where the plant is being built. This evening, we will be requesting the budget for construction and the remaining land acquisitions. At the end of construction, the city will have a facility that produces eight million gallons a day, and is expandable to sixteen million gallons a day. We have a short video that shows a flyover over the main cell elements. If we can play that video? We might be having some technical difficulties, but essentially, what the
We're waiting for a slide.
Yeah, yeah, what the video shows is a flyover of our facility, starting with the raw water pump station, and then flying over and showing our operations building, as well as the treatment train, and ultimately, our maintenance facility, so.
Thank you very much.
So, one more slide, one more slide, and see if I can get to them.
Done?
Yeah, I don't, no, I don't think it's going to play.
I've hit, oh, here it comes, all right.
So, if we're having difficulties with the video, let's just go to, oh, there it is. There you see the raw water pump station, this is at the point of connection with SRP at, in Avondale. We go over six miles west, and you see our operations building, this is where our control room will be, and our operators will be housed. This is the treatment train with some of the main facilities, and ultimately, as I said, our maintenance building, which is small but pretty efficient. So, can we go to the next slide?
I'm not saying anything, you tell me.
There's one more slide, I'm seeing, well, regardless of the last slide, but our final, before we go to our final ask, I'd like to highlight that staff will be returning at a later date for a request for council to approve the operations contract.
There we go.
Yes. That request will be funded through our operations budget for the relevant fiscal year, so it won't be part of the CIP project. Finally, tonight, we're requesting mayor and council to approve budgeted expenditure in the amount of one-hundred-and-ten-million, four-hundred-and-one-thousand for construction services and land acquisition costs related to the construction of the Goodyear Water Treatment Facility. Our team is ready to answer any questions that mayor and council might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Javier. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Then I'd like to have a motion a second to approve the expenditure authority up to one-hundred-and-ten-million, four-hundred-and-one-thousand for fees and costs for completion of the Goodyear Water Treatment Facility and Raw Water Delivery Pipeline project. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. I heard a motion by Councilman Hampton, and a second by Councilman Campbell. Open for council discussion. Councilman Hampton.
Yeah, no, this is also a great project for the city. We can't grow without more water, and everybody's asking us, are you planning for the future, for the city, for water, and this is part of that planning for the future of Goodyear as well, and we get higher-quality water, it'll be top water from our CAP allotment, and this is the project that will bring that to our city, so it's very exciting as we're planning for the future, and also bringing better quality water to our residents as well, so definitely excited about this project. I mean, it's not as, you can't use it like you can the park, but it's definitely something that everybody will, everybody will be using by default anyway, so they'll all taste the quality, and they'll all see the water, so, so thank you so much, and looking forward to this project as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Bazillo.
Again, I want to thank you for all your efforts. I know this has been a project long in the making and coming, and our partner with SRP, it all started with a thought of how are we going to get our CAP allocation so we can meet future growth? And when we worked that partnership with SRP and figured out a way of getting that water to us, because without this water, we're not growing, I mean, it's as simple as that, and for the need to meet the needs of the future on here. So, again, heavy work with getting SRP, staff, all working out these deals, and I appreciate all the effort that you've done on it, and again, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody on this side? Well, I just want to say, we have to think back at the beginning of this.
Yeah.
Who, I remember people saying, you'll never have a, you know, a communication and a partnership with SRP, that's for the East Valley. Remember those days? I remember those days, and then we found out there was an avenue for that, and because of that, now we're able to build this installation and bring that water. So, council, let's vote on it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, now we're down to the information items for the regular meetings. Does council have any proposal, or anything they want to announce tonight? Councilman Hampton?
I do, I do.
I'm, okay, I see Councilman Stip, you've got a piece of paper there, so. Oh, okay, all right. Councilman Campell?
Well, last week, we had the opportunity to go to Tucson for the Arizona League of Cities. It was a wonderful time to network with other council members and share our experiences and any problems that we foresee our city might have, and listen to other solutions. We were honored to have many members from the state legislature join us, and we were able to really have one-on-one conversations with so many people, it was just wonderful, and the seminars were great, and Ken Stroback, who has been our executive director of the League of Cities for fourteen years, will be retiring at the end of December, and we were able to honor him, and it was just a really nice conference, and I'm so glad all of, almost all of us were able to be there.
I appreciate you talking about it, you're absolutely right, it was terrific, council. Any other comments? Yes, Councilman Stip.
I had the, I had the privilege of attending the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Off-the-Hook Meat Shop.
Thank you.
Wigwam Boulevard and Indian School Road. Great story about a Goodyear resident opening a business in the city, but also an amazing background story of not only her life, but the individual that is her meat supplier, and how he is helping other entrepreneurs open other meat shops throughout the valley, so just incredible. Their selection is awesome, we will have our first meat from there tomorrow, so next week, I can tell you how it was, but seriously, no, it was a great, great event, and I think they're in a great location, and I hope that we see a good local business do well.
I appreciate, Vice Mayor, that you took that, because it wasn't back yet from the event, so I really appreciate, and we went in, Ron and I went in, and I will say, we've had our first taste of their meat, so, and they were so kind and open to telling us how to cook it. Both of us kind of forgotten what to do in the kitchen anymore, so it was great, and I will tell you, she's convinced her entire family to continue working there, so all those that you saw behind the meat counter, those are her family members, and they're going to be part of the business, so I just think it's just a real exciting time for us. All right, turning it over to you to the manager, so you have anything to report? Oh, whoop, sorry, yes, Councilman Hampton.
Just in light of, just in light of everybody that came for public comment, too, I just want to make sure that we're doing anything we can to help out with the water on our end, so, so just, I'm sure we're looking, I know we're, I know we're working on it, or looking into it, so.
All right.
That's all I had, that's the comment I had, thank you.
Can I piggyback on that, real quick?
All right, we have some, we have some ditto's here.
I'm putting it in the form of a question.
All right, councilmembers, Vice Mayor?
So, can we get information later in this week, because it's not an agenda, agendized item, so later in the week, through our usual managers' update, information about the permitting process and the status of the pipe repair?
Yes.
No discussion, that's just a question.
Yes, absolutely, that, and I was going to make a comment in my information items, that the continuum is working diligently with Pebble Creek's general manager and their engineering company on the plans they submitted last week, so, and absolutely, we'll be providing an update for council.
Any other comments on this side? Okay, so the next meeting, do you have anything else to report?
Just one other thing, Mayor, and that was, we will be closed in observance of Labor Day on Monday, September 2nd, reopening on Tuesday, September 3rd. Emergency fire, police services, and sanitation services will operate as normal.
Thank you very much. Well, the next meeting will be a work session on September 9th, 2019, at 4:30, followed by a regular meeting, immediately thereafter, a special meeting. Okay, so there's no further business, I'm going to adjourn this, but before I do, do you, anybody feel like they want to break before we go into the work session? Okay, fifteen minutes, is that, is that enough? Okay, so with no further business, I'm going to adjourn this meeting.